This is our first council work session since the renovations have begun in the council chamber. And if you walked by it this morning, you can see that they have begun that work today. We're here today to discuss the critical issue, public safety in Portland, and in particular, to learn more about several of the Portland Police Bureau's initiatives and how P P B is working to make Portland safer for all of us. We have a very tight schedule, so I'll be brief here. I'll just kick this off by handing it right over to my Director of Community Safety, Stephanie Howard. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. As the mayor noted, we have a lot of information to share today, but I want to take a moment to make a brief note before we begin. Today's presentation does not include the many efforts underway to reduce gun violence. I'm working to schedule another work session in the near future that we can dedicate to a thorough report out on what P P B, the Office of Violence Prevention, Community Safety Division, and the Portland Ceasefire Program have achieved. We're seeing very positive data trends, and I want to ensure there's sufficient time to provide comprehensive information. So stay tuned for that. Today, instead, we're going to focus on other P P B initiatives to ensure that all of you and the community feel informed and up to speed on P P B's important work. We're fortunate to have a number of presenters from P P B with us today, share information about a variety of topics, including stolen vehicle operations, human trafficking interdictions, drugs, and the work of the Central Bike Squad, retail theft missions, street takeovers, the Behavioral Health Unit, and the status of P P B's hiring and staffing. Chief Day and D C Frome are also here to answer any questions you have and make some closing remarks. So with that, I think I'm passing it to Sergeant Nutting to kick us off on stolen vehicle operations.
Thanks, Stephanie. Good morning. Trying to figure out a share my screen here. And I think we're there. All right. Good morning, Lieutenant Staples and myself, Sergeant Brad Nutting, are present from East Precinct to talk about stolen vehicles and stolen vehicle operations that have been being conducted at East Precinct. There's been thirty-one S V Os conducted in the last year and a half, a little bit more. During that timeframe, there's been two hundred and eighty-seven stolen vehicles recovered, three hundred and eighty-two arrests have been made, four hundred and six warrants have been serviced, and fifty-three illegally possessed firearms have been recovered. Unfortunately, when you look in the local media outlets, you can find a large amount of articles all related to stolen vehicles in our Portland area. A couple of notes that you may or may not remember, if you were in the Portland metro area when this call occurred, it happened in about forty-nine and Powell back in September of twenty twenty-two. There was a seven-year-old girl sleeping in the backseat of her parents' car as they returned their U-Haul there at forty-nine and Powell, and somebody stole that vehicle and an Amber Alert was issued. Luckily, she was found near Laurelhurst Park, and she was safely recovered along with the vehicle. Another one is there was two separate incidents, but this one in particular, there was two students that were wounded during a drive-by shooting at Jefferson High School again in twenty twenty-two. And this news article has a picture in the bottom right quadrant of that. And that is that car blown up in the photo, and that happens to be the suspect vehicle, which was also a stolen vehicle. The reason I bring these up is when we talk about stolen vehicles and when we look at them, they're more than just a property crime. They're involved in gun violence, armed robberies, fatal hit-and-runs, homicides, human trafficking, carjackings, and generally vehicles for future crimes. The stolen vehicle operations started utilizing evidence-based practice back in March of twenty twenty-two. Evidence-based practice is from the medical industry. And how we incorporated that into our stolen vehicle operations is through utilizing officers' knowledge and trying to get a further understanding of how they, they being the officers who are good at identifying stolen vehicles in the community, how they understand and look at a vehicle's physical characteristics and driving behavior to determine that it's a stolen vehicle as it's active in the community. And through that, we came up with enrichment factors. And enrichment factors are elements that will increase the likelihood of an event occurring in a data set. The elements being those physical characteristics or the driving behaviors that are present and the event being that that vehicle is stolen. So during the stolen vehicle operations, officers are sent out with data collection sheets and over the thirty-one stolen vehicle operations, they have collected over a hundred thousand different data points, which we can then place into this spreadsheet and run analytics, very basic analytics that we can do, and then try to determine patterns to help identify stolen vehicles using those enrichment factors. Understanding our limitations, we reached out to a qualified area representative in our community at the Knight Cancer Institute, and specifically Dr. Jeffrey Tyner, who is an expert in the use of big data to cure leukemia. So we reached out as a peer review expert in the field of utilizing big data. And they've been guiding us and assisting us with the stolen vehicle operations utilization of evidence-based practices. The first meeting occurred in June of twenty twenty-two, and there's been many follow-ups since, and they're guiding us in our methodologies. The overall goal of the stolen vehicle operations and the evidence-based practice use is less stops and better outcomes for the community. How we're able to utilize the data in other ways is we can break down by percentages of the vehicles that do elude forty-one percent of those vehicles come back as stolen. Thirty-nine percent of the vehicles that elude have an arrest warrant inside. Sorry, my presentation's jumping around. Of the stolen vehicles that elude officers on these stolen vehicle operations, thirty-two percent of them have an illegally possessed firearm inside. And the average elude time throughout our city where these offenders are driving recklessly and endangering our community is approximately thirteen minutes on average every time that they elude. We can also break this down for the five stolen vehicle operations that didn't utilize the evidence-based practice approach. We can look at that in comparison. And we can see that the average number of stops was eighty-six. Officers located in one stolen vehicle for every thirty-one stops. They arrested one person for every six stops, and they came across an illegally possessed firearm once for every hundred and forty-four stops. And in the column on the right side, we can look at the thirty-one stolen vehicle operations that have utilized evidence-based practices. And we can see an increase in a benefit for our community on every single line item there. The overall number of stops has decreased down to thirty-eight during the missions. Officers are locating a stolen vehicle, one in every four stops, and the arrest ratio is the same, one in every four stops. And coming across an illegally possessed firearm, one in every twenty-eight stops. It should be noted that the stolen vehicle operations are not focusing on guns, but we're seeing a nexus or a possibility of a nexus between stolen vehicles and illegally possessed firearms in the community. Again, all of this is being done with the idea of less stops and better outcomes. Our key performance indicator is our ratios of how many stolen vehicles we're recovering or locating that are active in our community for the number of stops that are being conducted on these missions. We're currently sitting at one stolen vehicle recovered for every four stops or encounters for those thirty-one missions. We can also put it out in a trend line, and you'll see on the left side of the screen, three sixteen of twenty twenty-two is when we first utilized evidence-based practices in this data collection process. And on the right side of the screen, you can see that trend line going downward, which is actually good because this is our stops and our stolen vehicle ratio. So the very first one was one in fourteen back in three, sorry, back in March of twenty twenty-two. Over the past four months since late July, early August, we're now trending in that one and two, one and three fairly consistently. The nice thing that we can do with this data and information is we can adjust to different things that we're seeing out in the community as far as stolen vehicles go and what adaptations offenders are making to make it harder for us to identify those stolen vehicles. And then we can come back on the next mission and adjust and drop those ratios back down, as you'll see by the upward and downward movement across that chart. We can also break it down in demographics based on our stops. In conversations with O H S U and their researchers, we were provided with some information that was very enlightening and how to assess this and look at the demographics. And they recognized that we can't stop everybody in the community, and not everybody that lives in that area are the people out driving at the time that we're running the missions. And so what they said is the proportionality needs to be consistent or proportional from our stops to our stolen vehicle operators and our custodies. And if you look at these three charts, we see proportionality across those. And that leads us to believe that our officers are using the evidence-based practice approach and the enrichment factors to identify and stop the correct vehicles that are actively stolen in the community. Additionally, the stolen vehicle operations is becoming multi-agency collaboration with the District Attorney's Office in Mollum County, Gresham Police Department, Port of Portland Police, Mollum County Sheriff's Office, and Oregon State Police. We can look at the historical data regarding stolen vehicle reports in the city of Portland. This is published on the Portland Police Bureau's public-facing dashboards. And as we look back to March of twenty twenty-two to the most recent data we could grab, which was from August of twenty twenty-three, we can look at the number of stolen vehicles reported to the Portland Police Bureau over that time. We can start seeing a downward trend in February of this year. There was a lot of media coverage and interest surrounding stolen vehicle operations that began at that time. We're not clear if that is one of the reasons for the decline in the stolen vehicles being reported, but it is something to note on that chart. Additionally, we can look back year-to-date from August of twenty-three to August of twenty twenty-two and look at the differences in stolen vehicles being reported in the Portland community. That's a thirty-six percent decrease or three hundred and thirty-two less victims of stolen vehicles. That is all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Before, Stephanie, before we move on to the next speaker, colleagues, since we don't usually do all virtual, you know, work sessions, usually people just jump in, but since we're virtual, if you raise your hand, I'll go ahead and call on you, Commissioner Maps.
Thank you. I want to thank staff for that presentation. I also really want to compliment the police bureau for this pilot project in particular. I think the results here are truly remarkable. If I'm doing my quick math correctly, it seems like this tool you developed has made us something like eight times more efficient at identifying and recovering stolen cars. So I just want to compliment you on that. The methods here are remarkable, too. The collaboration with O H S U is truly a model for how I hope policing in Portland works, and I think this is indeed probably a model for the entire nation. One quick question, though. Can you re, so this is a pilot project in one precinct. Could you remind us of the costs associated with this? Does anyone have that off the top of their head?
So an average mission costs about twenty thousand dollars in overtime. It's all overtime-related. Last, at the beginning of this fiscal year, council approved one point three million dollars for overtime and to look at trying new vehicles, specifically trucks, because our current police patrol vehicle is designed to crumple when we do intervention techniques. And so looking at a truck model that's a framed-based vehicle should help prevent all the repair costs. So we're still on that in that process. So that one point three was for trucks and upfitting and then overtime costs. And then we applied for a U S D O J grant under the Smart Initiative Policing, which awarded us another eight hundred thousand dollars to address technology and other issues like paying O H S U for their staff to help us with this project.
Great. Thank you so much. That's, that's very helpful. And because we're short on time, I'll turn my final question into more of a direct plea to my colleagues, and I think the mayor's staff in particular. I think the results that we've gotten with this pilot project are strong enough that we should sure look into expanding this. If I remember the numbers that we just saw, Portland last year, we experienced something like a thousand car thefts. Was that a month? How, how many cars do we typically, if we go back to last year, did we lose a month to car thefts?
It was anywhere between the not, the high nine hundreds to twelve hundred a month.
Yeah, you know, back in the bad old days, we were looking at losing a thousand cars to car thefts a month. All of us get calls from constituents who were trying to recover from losses like that. It seems like the returns to our residents would certainly be compelling or something we should look at. So I'd just like to make it short by asking the mayor's office to maybe sketch out a proposal on what it would take to expand this pilot project citywide. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you bet, Commissioner Maps. We, we can do that. In fact, Stephanie, I think we may have already done that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think we, we were looking at, at how this rolls out. I think there has been a lot of effort to collaborate, as they noted, among not just P P B, but also in our other law enforcement partners. This team is, you know, working to train internally as well as externally to bring this kind of approach to it. So that is absolutely, I think, in the vision going forward.
Yeah, great. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Maps. So that's, that's a yes. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sergeant Nutting. That was a really great presentation. First of all, I want to just take a breath and say how happy I am that you reached out to O H S U and really went to a place that they really obviously use sophisticated evidence-based practices with real metrics that save lives and save and heal. And I've always found that medical and even aerospace engineering are the two industries that have always provided the best data, if you will, on how to do continuous improvement work. So I just want to congratulate the innovation that came from that move. So thank you. You mentioned that in February, and it could be a hunch that the media focus on this could have been a cause on why there was a dip, but I must have missed when these evidence, evidence-based practices were put into place. Was that around the same time, or did I miss that?
No, sir. It was initiated back in March of twenty twenty-two, and the nod to the potential of the media coverage having a nexus to the decline in reported stolons occurred in February of twenty twenty-three.
So I wanted to, like, make this direct link between implementing the evidence-based practices and the dip. Can you see that causation there?
Yes, and that's that one-year look back between August of twenty twenty-two and August of twenty twenty-three, that thirty-six percent decline in reported stolen vehicles to the Portland Police Bureau.
Okay, thanks. I didn't have a printout of this. I was looking at it quickly. I really do appreciate that. And you know, I always say, to show me results, we need to show you the resources. So this is a a model of what we should be looking at throughout the city. When we, when we go through our budget process is when we see results, then we find the money. That's our job as leaders. So I really appreciate this. I agree with Commissioner Map's statement on that. All right. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what my colleagues are saying. It's just super impressed with this data. Really, really interesting. I'm really impressed with how the efficiency of the model is just so interesting to me. I'm, I'm just, I have, I have a question that I'm curious about in terms of the training time that it took to ramp this up. What did that look like? And then what does it look like to scale? Like, what do you anticipate the training time for scaling and any capacity needs associated with that training time? Just curious.
So this is a, it's a couple-fold. When we started this, it was an hour orientation training to the officers, but it was repeatedly giving the same training over and over and over and over. So when you add the hours of training that they, they were hearing about it and then going, doing the practical work, which is a ten-hour shift, you have all that time for training to educate people. So that's why you saw one in fourteen start dipping down to where we're at now, one in two, one in three. Moving forward, one of the things that we are working with our training division is to teach new officers as they go through the advanced academy. So we have a block of time where we can start teaching them this process, which is, I believe, a multi-hour class. There's also look at using this into our annual training to teach officers throughout the police bureau this. That's a shorter time just because of the way in-service works. And currently, we're trying to develop a curriculum that when other agencies express interest, we have a training curriculum written out of how we do the missions, how O H S U has guided us through, through the process, and how someone can replicate what it is that we are doing. And but that's a bigger process and takes more time. The training hours on that really kind of depends once we get that doctrine done.
Well, just, it's, it's excellent work and just want to congratulate you, and I look forward to seeing it scale.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Just want to start off. Thank you for the report and outstanding program. I got to witness this on a ride-along some months ago, just blown away by the teamwork and the effectiveness here. I have a kind of a tangential question about our pursuit policy. You know, when we did the ride-along, I think it was noted that some of our, our neighbors authorized pursuit for stolen vehicles. The city of Portland currently does not, but utilizes really some pretty innovative techniques to address the gap. So I, I don't know if this is for the chief or who can answer this question, but how does our pursuit policy compare to the aggression to sheriff's state? Is it, and does it leave a gap for us in our approach to pursuit, specifically with respect to stolen vehicles?
Yeah, Commissioner, so we have had that gap, but we're in the process of reviewing the pursuit policy now. I've been working with this team, working with the train division and the policy team, trying to close that gap, mitigate some of the risks that are associated with chasing stolen vehicles and other property crimes, burglary, for example, or retail theft or speed racing. So we've recognized that, and we're on a path to try and close that gap and also provide the proper training and guidance to the members to be able to manage those safely and effectively. So I, I think we'll be in a good place here in the coming weeks to be able to report back on that.
Right. And, you know, this is a non-experts' observation. It was truly fascinating to watch the innovations that Portland police have put in place without being able to pursue, right? I mean, the, particularly on these type of missions where you can sort of work as a team to circular, you know, circulate a, someone, and I utilize air support. So it's really fascinating to watch the innovation that's come about with the constraints you've been operating under, but fully supportive of updating policy to, you know, not to tie your hands too much in the city, at least parity with neighbors. So thank you.
All right. I think we're, I'll keep us moving here, but please, if I can collect questions and get you all answers, I'm happy to do that. I think our next presenter.
Stephanie, could I, could I just add, just because I, I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding about what Commissioner Gonzalez just said. That, that is a policy that was developed internal to the police bureau. That, that was a call made by the bureau itself. I want to be clear that, that it was not council that directed that policy.
Got it. Helpful. Thank you. And you're talking about oh-six-thirty-point-oh-five. Is that the one? That's the?
The non-pursuit policy. That, that was a trade-off decision made internally to P P B.
Got it.
All right. I will hand it now over to Sergeant Christie Butcher to tell us about the Human Trafficking Unit.
Thanks, Stephanie. I'm Christie Butcher. I am the sergeant of the trafficking unit, and I've been in this role for over two years. I'm going to try to share my screen here. And just a caveat, I do not have quite the elaborate presentation that Brad had, but I do have some numbers that I'll put up here in a little bit. So like I said, I've been in this role for over two years. Our current human trafficking team consists of two detectives and three full-time officers. And we're responsible for long-term investigations throughout the city as well as conducting monthly missions. I'm going to go over some terms, just so we're all on the same page as I talk about things throughout these missions. Our blade or our track is pretty much eighty-second and Sandy and a few blocks in each direction. It seems like the hotspot goes from McDaniel High School up to Sandy along eighty-second and then along Sandy from eighty-two, pretty much to the Econo Lodge, which is like the freeway, ninety-sixth Avenue. from eighty-two uh pretty much to the Econo Lodge, which is like the freeway ninety-six avenue. Another term I'll use regularly is trafficker. A lot of you might refer to that as a pimp. Um, here in the unit, we don't use the term pimp because it kind of, society's kind of glamorized that term and made it cool. Um, and we don't want to give those folks who cause harm any credit. So we'll refer to them as traffickers. Another term that I'll use is sex provider. Um, some people call those folks prostitutes or sex workers. Um, but through our work and our experience, we believe most of the women out walking um are doing it for some other reason than their own ch- excuse me, their own choice. So I'll refer to those women as sex providers. And I refer to them as women as well because everyone we've contacted out there identifies as a woman, as a woman, or they are a woman. So um, and then the last term I'll go over is purchaser. Um, I call them sex buyers, but pretty much they've been can um charged with the crime of commercial sexual solicitation. So traditionally, the human trafficking unit has run one to two missions a month, and we have very various missions that we run. We run hotel missions where we pose as sex buyers in hopes of getting the sex providers to respond to us uh to agree to meet us at a hotel. And when they do so, we uh talk with them and we u- utilize our victim advocates to offer them wraparound resources. And the whole goal of running these missions other than to contact the sex providers is to also hopefully take steps to identify who their traffickers are, if they have one. Uh, the other type of hotel mission we run is where we post ads and impose as sex providers in hopes of getting sex buyers to respond. Um, and those missions have been highly successful as of recent. Um, and then the last kind of mission I'll go over is the main one that we're going to talk about today. We term it a directed patrol, and that's where it happens out at the street level uh on our blade. And we're addressing not only the criminal activity in the area, but a lot of the sex providing, the walking, um, and then uh as well as the sex buyers. So throughout our work, we are seeing a ton of um increase in activities. It turned very blatant. It wasn't uncommon to drive through the blade and see upwards of twenty women out walking. Um, and most of them were wearing little to no clothing, especially in the summer. And then in passing at meetings, I'd get comments from other Portland police members about how bad the activity was, and they couldn't believe how blatant it was. Community members reached out via email and phone uh to express their concerns. I know many of you heard their concerns as well. I met regularly with the McDaniel High School principal. And he was hearing concerns from his students saying that they weren't feeling safe walking to school. He even had uh some female students come in and say that they'd been propositioned by men um thinking that they were working, walking the streets. Uh, I heard from many of you as well as many of the businesses in the area who were extremely frustrated and directly impacted by all this criminal activity. The precincts reached out and they were looking for some enforcement. So this led to s- some overall frustration. I was frustrated because we were running missions regularly, but uh we weren't seeing the results that I had hoped to see. They're very short-term results. It's like pretty much as soon as we leave, they'd all come back. And being uh as passionate as I am about the equality model, it's not written anywhere in a policy, but we do follow it through our practice. And I could give a whole class on the equality model, but simply to put it is, we're not arresting women for the crime of prostitution. If they're committing other crimes, especially violent crimes, we'll arrest them on those, but we're not just arresting for the crime of prostitution. And like I said before, that's because through our work, we r- we really believe that most of the women out there walking are doing it because someone else is making them do it. Um, and so, and the other part of the equality model is we target the buyers and the traffickers. So we're going after the people who are creating this high demand and the people who are doing the harm to others. But I was overall frustrated because I firmly believe in the equality model, and we work with uh survivors all the time that explain, you know, the good of the equality model. And uh, but at the end of the day, the problems were because the women were out on the street, not only attracting the buyers that showed up in many of your neighborhoods, and they were like lined up, just trying to get a chance to talk with the woman at the corner in hopes of striking a deal. Um, but the traffickers brought a bunch of violence as well. So they would all be circling the women who were standing on the corner. Um, and we saw a rise in assaults, a few homicides in that direct area, shootings. And so um it was just frustrating because it seemed like if the gals weren't there, the main focus of the violence also wouldn't be there. So we met to brainstorm with the D A who's been awesome on this project, um could not have done all this without their support. And met with all the commanders from the precincts. Like I said, they were, they were seeking some enforcement through the way of rest, of arresting people. Uh, they were hearing the same exact concerns that all of us were hearing. And then, like I mentioned, um, it was a hotspot for violence that was showing up on our, on our maps that we see through our S S D division. The next key um meeting was to meet with businesses in the area who were directly impacted by this sort of criminal activity. They were all very eager to help. Uh, we helped, we worked with one business in particular along Sandy Boulevard who had a a parking lot that was just ripe for crime. They had tall bushes and it was very secluded from the street due to the bushes, and it was poorly lit. So we worked with them. Um, and they immediately cut down the bushes and they're still working with Safe Blocks to hopefully improve their lighting. Um, but that was a huge factor to, to how this mis- these missions became successful. And then all the media, all the businesses that we met with, they were also on board with asking folks to leave when they were caught committing criminal activity on their property. So that was huge. Uh, through all this planning, we planned fifteen missions in eight weeks. So if you do the math, that's over one and a half missions a, a week. Uh, that's a tall task for a very small unit. Uh, and you know, the precincts who are also a little short-staffed at the time. We plan these missions. We varied them by the days and the times. I wanted to make sure we were providing some um support to the school. So we made sure to do at least three of these missions during school hours. Um, and really, the target was to contact and arrest the buyers, arrest the traffickers as well as contact the sex providers and offer them wraparound resources through the use of our victim advocates here in the victim services unit uh to hopefully make better a better impact for their life. Um, I'll talk a little bit about it here in a second when I go over the numbers, but most of these women, they're not wanting resources at the time, but making that initial contact leads to good things down the road. You know, if we're not lying to them, if we're, you know, being honest and telling them exactly what we intend to do. And then the last part of these missions was to address that overall criminal activity in the area.
Hey, Chrissy, sorry. I just, I want to make sure two things. I, I want to give a time check because I know we're running behind already, but also your slides have not been advancing if you if, I just want to make sure that that's okay.
Did that one just go?
It did.
Okay, yep. Uh, thank you. So these missions were human trafficking-led, but they would not have happened without the precinct supplying the bodies that the D A was at every mission. Mulledham County probation and parole, they were at every mission. We had members of task force from the F B I and Homeland Security. Traffic Division participated in half of these missions. Air support was there. P S threes were vital to the success of these. And then, like I talked about, our advocates. So after we ran four missions, we saw a dramatic impact in the area. Uh, it was almost immediate after week two. Um, and so because of the low staffing and everything, we decided that we could use our people the best. So we decreased the missions from fifteen to nine. Um, and so here's some numbers that I wanted to go over real quick. Um, during these missions, it's actually yeah, it is nine. The ninth one didn't make it on here. Um, we contacted two hundred and fifty-six people in the area. We towed a lot of cars. We seized some illegally possessed firearms, twelve of them. We made over fifty arrests and half of those arrests were sex buyers. So that's really good impact in that exact business, the trafficking business, is to try to reduce the demand because trafficking is all about money. It's about owning a person, a woman, that can make you a lot of money in a short amount of time. Um, and so by reducing, do, doing our part to reduce the demand, hopefully means that there will be less victims traffic. So um during these missions, we had various observers. I know many of you had staff members ride with me um as well as the principal of McDaniel High School. And then I've had media uh observers as well. Um, the other key stat to point out here is we contacted over sixty sex providers. I'm still waiting for the numbers to see how many of those were repeat women. I would guess about ten of them were repeat, um, so not a high number, which is kind of common because the, the trade of human trafficking, they switch cities a lot to avoid um law enforcement detection, but um, and about a third of the women that we contacted actually engaged with advocates on scene. And that kind of goes with the trend that we see throughout the rest of our missions. What I think the three keys to success were for those specific missions was definitely the collaboration with all the the partners as well as the precincts being flexible. They were short-staffed at the time, but they were still willing to send bodies to make these missions effective. Um, we couldn't have done it without the hotels and the businesses being on board and feeling supported. Um, I talked with many of them in the area where they had called non-emergency and not either gotten somebody to respond or not gotten the service they were hoping for. Many of these hotels were on board to ask folks to leave, but when they would do so, they would get threatened, either verbally and sometimes physically. And so that was scary to them. But now that they are feeling supported, um, things are going a lot better. We would help them out when we're out there to help get people trespassed off their property. And then I think the, the other big thing as to why we saw such a great impact is we were now taking folks to jail for every crime that we were arresting, especially the sex buyers. And before, due to policies and Multnomah County um booking and stuff, we weren't allowed to take sex buyers to jail. And so now we're taking them to jail, we're towing their car when, when legally possible. And then uh we're releasing names to the media. And those three things are huge deterrents, right? How, how do you explain to your family or your significant other where you've been for the last four to six hours? How come your car is now been towed? And also, why are they reading about you uh on social media? And then to close it out, just where do we go from here? How do we stay successful? I know that our work's not done, and you can drive through the area and you'll probably see a, a few sex providers. My hope is that we'll continue to keep our foot on the pedal, so to speak, and keep arrest, making these key arrests, making these contacts, hopefully, you know, improving things out there. Um, but we're going to have to figure out ways to do that with the lean staffing that we have. We're a small unit, so conducting two missions a week is not sustainable for this unit, but continuing to work with the precincts to con- to increase that education on how to do this work and how, how to do it effectively. As well as bring proactive policing back to Portland. And then, and this work session is all, you know, it's what that's about. And you know, for numerous reasons, the past three, four years, we got away from a lot of proactive police work. Um, but bringing that back out, it excites young officers. They're excited to come out and work these missions and do this work and make these, these big impacts. Um, real quick, just a couple pictures to show throughout our missions. We're able to see some good stuff. That one picture, not for the week, that's actually a young eighteen-year-old. It's tattooed up on her, up on her neck for everyone to see. Um, and then we got a, a few items of feedback from the community. Um, so we're going to continue to do our investigations and we'll strategically plan our missions. We'll support the precincts with their missions. Um, and I think the big thing is to continue to build our trust and relationships with the businesses, the community partners, and the key stakeholders in the area. I think that's all that I have for you guys.
Commissioner Maps?
Um, very quickly, because I know we're tight on time. First, I want to thank you for this report. And I also want to thank you for this important work. Um, I also, I want to share this. I used to work out on Sandy Boulevard at a hundred and twelfth or so. So the dynamic, the prostitution dynamics that you talk about or the human trafficking uh dynamics you talk about are uh all too familiar uh to anyone who has spent any time out there. Um, and back when I was helping the Park Rose Business District try to revitalize a little bit, this was one of the big issues we had to face. Um, and in my experience, uh, um, I think at least from a grassroots level, one of the things that we really discovered was working really closely with the hotel owners in specific uh to develop policies and procedures and practices that um keep everybody safe. Um, and I'm wondering uh how those conversations are going. And I'll tell you, I probably have a larger um argument I want to make, and I'll just make it explicit because I know we're short on, on time. Um, you know, we have car-based uh human trafficking and we have hotel-based human trafficking uh with, at least with the hotel-based human trafficking, if you can work with the hotels so they could, they set up uh procedures, like you, at least you have to give an I D, you know, show I D when you rent a room, for example. And for the most part, I've found that the owners don't want to be in the business of serving to that, that clientele. Um, I, I've found if you provide them with support and training, sometimes you can move some hotels in this direction. Um, I get the impression the police bureau is doing that to some degree, at least historically. Our old crime prevention program uh uh would have folks who could are uh could go out and meet directly with hotels and work with them over time. I don't know if that practice still exists, but if it doesn't currently exist, um, I, I think this is one way in which we could uh uh have different parts of the city work together towards a common goal. Uh, so I'll just throw that out there. If anyone has any responses, that's fine. All right, love to hear it. Otherwise, I can let us move on.
I'll just say really quickly, uh, Commissioner Maps, uh, the Safe Blocks program is the new version of the crime prevention program, and they are working through C S D and gaps of violence prevention to do exactly that kind of work, among other things, uh, with hoteliers.
Great. Well, I, I hope they're coordinating specifically with the human, the folks who are doing our human trafficking work in this particular. It sounds like we have a fairly tight geographic neighborhood, so I can imagine we're almost set up for success here, at least. Uh, but there's, speaking of experiments, this would be a ra- great experiment to see a surge um from crime prevention with uh the great work we heard about today.
And I'll just say, uh, everyone in our direct impacted area, the blade, is on board with us. It took a while for some of the properties uh to come on board and to to see the light, so to speak, but they're all on board. They've been great partners, doing exactly what we've asked of them. Um, and like I said, we just need to continue those relationships and strengthen them.
I'm glad to hear that. And I'll share one last thing, which goes back to come up kind of my community organizing uh um phase. I think at least in some situations, depending on the dynamics of what's happening at a hotel, there might be B D S violations or whatnot, which can come into play to make sure that uh the building is safe and other practices are safe there too. So I, I hope that we're looking at our whole toolkit as we uh do this important work. And I'll lower my hand so Commissioner Ryan can speak.
Commissioner Ryan?
So thank you. Thank you so much, Sergeant, uh, Butcher. That was a really great report. Uh, I wanted to just make sure I didn't miss a few things. Um, and I really appreciate the new language that you're giving me. Uh, it, it was very helpful and it made sense. I'm, I might pause down there to make sure I don't blow it and, and use the wrong term. So I appreciate that. Um, you, you, you uh said twenty-five of the fifty-two arrests were purchasers, correct? So that leaves uh twenty-seven, and I think I missed, um, if I was hoping to hear that that would be the the traffickers, if we were the remaining, but I, I didn't hear that.
Um, so we didn't arrest any traffickers for the crime of trafficking. They've been arrested like on gun charges and other charges, and we've launched several investigations from those. As far as the other uh arrests, most of those were warrant arrests and um a couple trespassing arrests, but mostly warrants, possession of illegal firearms, those kinds of things.
And that was of assumed traffickers or of pos- of the um purchase of the sex providers? I, I just got confused.
So I believe there was a, a handful of sex providers arrested on warrants. Uh, no one was arrested for prostitution. One woman was arrested for trespassing because uh she didn't think that we were serious because in the past, we haven't been arresting uh, you know, sex providers, but we, we got authorization from the business. They didn't want that criminal activity on their property. And so when we caught her the first time, we warned her. She came right back the next day uh and told us that she didn't think we were serious about arresting her. Um, but the rest of the folks were either other criminal activity in that direct area or sex buyers. Um, and like I said, a handful of, of who we believe to be sex traffickers. Um I could talk forever about this, but it's super hard to get convictions on sex traffickers with no victim participation. So most of the sex providers aren't willing to do that. So it's hard to make those arrests right there.
That made complete sense. I'm glad we had that uh conversation. Um and the focus area, which you used the term, was it blade? What, what, I, okay. The blade. Um when you start, when you've been focusing in that area, uh the blade, have you seen a shift to another? Part of town nearby, or is there any intelligence on that?
We were expecting a big shift. You know, we came in with a lot of heat in that area and we were kind of thinking it would just displace to other areas. And what we've seen is it's more or less spread out. So it's not as concentrated as it was in our specific blade. A couple of it's moved a little bit further into Park Rose. Sorry, Park Rose, but it's, it's a smaller. Um section than what we're dealing with, and some of it's moved a little south. Now, the other part is they're just picking up and moving. This uh, you know, human trafficking is very transitory in nature. And so when we contact them and say, hey, you can't do this here anymore. They, they go back to the hotel and we'd say, where are you going? And most of them would tell us California. So I think they're gone for a little bit.
Yeah. And how many are working on your team? You said it was a small team. I didn't hear the number.
It's myself, two detectives and three officers.
So there's six of you?
Yes.
All right. And then um, do you have any stories, um you know, triumphant stories that I know probably take much longer? People uh going into treatment um for this, or yeah, so you can see some restoration?
Uh yeah, we've had some good stories. Uh like I said, the initial contact's super important to build that trust. Uh and when they're either ready to tell us their story or something's changed and they are not feeling, uh they're not feeling safe. Uh they'll reach back out and we just slowly build those relationships. Uh when I first came into the unit two years ago, we had a gal who we hadn't really talked to in about a year. Uh and she finally, for one reason or another, something changed. She decided she wanted to tell us her story. Uh and so we were arrest, we were able to arrest her trafficker for compelling, and he's still sitting in jail to this day awaiting trial. So.
No, I appreciate that. That makes sense. Relationships move at the speed of trust and you're building those relationships. Um tell me this, where, where do you take someone if they are really uh telling us that they're ready for, for help?
Uh th- this is where we rely on our advocates to partner with community uh organizations. And so there's a lot of, you know, organizations out there that provide advocacy. They'll provide mental health, get. Housing, either short-term, hopefully transitioned to long-term. Provide job training. You know, a lot of these women were trafficked since the age of twelve to fifteen. And so they've never really had jobs. Um so there's a lot of keys that go uh to that success. But uh we couldn't do it without our community partners, that's for sure.
No, we can. I think formalizing those partnerships and uh having longitudinal data that would be connected to their results would be really helpful. For decision-makers like us that, again, show us the results, we'll show you the money. And so I look forward to hearing more about that. Thanks.
Sounds good.
And could I just ask one data question? I'm looking at some data and perhaps it's, it's uh not current. It shows. Oh, let's see, uh human trafficking twenty-three versus twenty-two year-to-date is down six percent. But I'm not sure what that means when it says human trafficking is down six percent. Does that ring a bell to you? I'm, I'm not sure what.
Reported there?
Reported. Okay, thank you. Got it. Thanks. That answers my question. Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, we're, we're super behind. I think we're behind a whole presenter at this point. So I'm gonna press us forward as quickly as we can and maybe if we can condense presentations a little bit more. And again, commissioners, I am always happy to facilitate getting you in touch with any of the folks to do a deep dive on their work. We just want to give you all an overview today. Um our next presenter is Commander Dobson to talk about the Bike Squad and give us a little bit of info about drug interdictions.
Uh good morning. I'm Commander Dobson with Central Precinct, and I appreciate Mayor and Commissioners the opportunity that we have to share some of the great work. Uh that's being done in Central Precinct. First, let me be clear, though, that although I'll be talking about the Bike Squad exclusively, there are only a small portion of the officers who are out there every day. Taking calls. And that uh they're doing a great work throughout Central Precinct. The Bike Squad itself consists of four officers and a sergeant. They're one of the proactive units of Central Precinct, and they work closely with our public and private partners. Such as Street Services Coordination Center, as well as Portland Clean and Safe and many, many other private security. Companies and businesses to reduce crime and the fear of crime. The bike's main focus is on livability issues. All right. Did that change? Did you get a new slide? Perfect. Sorry, it wasn't changing up here. Uh since May of this year, the Bike Squad has spent a good portion of their focus on open-air drug use in the downtown area. They have issued over five hundred Measure One Ten citations, and it provided the card you see on the right of the screen. To everyone that they issue a citation to. Since October of this year, Oregon State Police have been assisting us in the downtown area by providing six to ten troopers. Once a week to integrate and ride with our bike team. For these past six weeks, they have aided our team in helping increase our visible presence. Address overall li- uh visibility issue, liabilities. Livability issues and drug uh dealers in the downtown core. And I'd also like to point out that we've worked with our Narcotics Division, the US Attorney's Office, as well as the Sheriff's Office. In, in these issues. Thus far, our six unified missions in the downtown uh area. That have been conducted on different days and different hours have netted us, as you can see. Thirty-two arrests of people dealing fentanyl, twenty-six additional people have been arrested for other charges and warrants. Eight guns have been seized and almost one and a half kilos of fentanyl have been taken off the streets in downtown. If I can stress again, that was just six days of work. The Central Bike Team and other officers continue to work outside the combined OSP P P B missions. And have seized multiple kilos of fentanyl, thousands of dollars of cash, and multiple guns over the past several months in the downtown area. As has been mentioned in previous presentations, we use data to inform and drive our areas of focus. Our Strategic Services Division provides us with the data to provide our anecdotal knowledge of where the problems. Locations are, as well as track the trends in where calls are occurring. We believe that we are starting to make a small impact uh in the downtown with fentanyl. Based on two rudimentary benchmarks. First, we're hearing from businesses that they're seeing less open-air drug deals and sales. And secondly, uh in our interviews with our buyers and sellers of fentanyl. We're being told that fentanyl uh a few months ago could be bought for as little as twenty-five cents to fifty cents a pill. Or ten cents, or sorry, ten dollars a gram. Whereas in our last, most current interviews with dealers, due to the number of arrests we're being, that we have made. As well as the supply of drugs being taken off the street, their purchase prices are back up to what we saw a year ago, which is thirty to forty dollars a gram. Finally, we're seeing positive feedback from the community on our efforts, as shown in these couple of tweets that we have. And you can always follow us on Instagram through our Instagram Bike Squad thing. And that's all I have for you, for the bike team. I know the narcotics team will be following us and, and providing more information regarding the fentanyl situation. Thanks.
Commissioner Maps.
Uh yes, I'll just make a statement because I know we're short on time. Uh number one, I, I, I wanna uh um thank you for the presentation. Thank you for this incredibly important work. The Central Bike uh Squad does. Uh and I also, with my colleagues, want to share this dilemma, or at least thought experiment I've been going through. You know, right now, I think we're all doing what we can through our portfolios to encourage people to come downtown. Um again, I think uh I've been doing that at P-Bot. I know Commissioner Rubio. Probably everyone on this panel has, is invested in, in that to some degree. Um and then I also think about why people don't come downtown. Uh and the relationship between where our investments are and the, the return we get for that in terms of enticing more people to uh visit our downtown core. I'll give you a one recent example. Um uh uh P-Bot, um under my direction, uh made some parking free downtown uh during the holiday season. We're trying to encourage people to come down and shop. Uh that's a long practice in Portland, something I feel really good about. But when I think about the reasons why people don't actually come downtown, I think it has to do with concerns about livability um and safety. Um and as we head through this holiday season, um I am thinking about the return on investment I'm getting. For providing free parking, which will cost a significant amount of money versus the return on investment I would get in terms of attracting people downtown. If we had spent more dollars uh perhaps on overtime to support uh a greater uh bike presence. Um in our downtown core. I don't know what the answer to that is, uh but as we think about. Um how we spend our limited resources to promote economic revitalization. Um I think these are some of the um, some, this is some of the data that at least I'm tracking closely, and I'm sure there are other examples too. So and um if someone wants to respond to that, you can. I know we are very behind uh on time too. I can, so I can, I can see Stephanie telling me to basically move on. So I'll lower my hand and let Commissioner Gonzalez go.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
That's a great presentation. Uh Stephanie could, or if someone could forward on the, just the changes in street price. I was kind of curious about that stat separately. So I just would like to get that one way or another. I'm, I can't access the chat because of the way I'm logged in, otherwise I would have posted it there. But uh, thank you. That's all I've got right now.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, uh thank you so much, Commander Dobson. And I realize this is only six days. I'm, I have that in my head when I do this. But I am curious, does this entail the, the governor's recent announcement of having them join, uh people from the state join you? On the bike patrol? So this is a partnership?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how many uh are on the Bike Squad then with the combined uh P P B and the state?
It varies uh depending on the day and what the state can provide us, but anywhere from six to ten officers additional. Are added to the four plus one sergeant that we have.
And what I've been hearing from folks is uh this is micro-work, which is where we gotta start to learn and get some evidence-based practices. But I keep getting reports of those, you know, the usual thing, the whack-a-mole, where then it spreads to a different area. I know that you know all of this as well. Um so I'm, then I'm always curious just to hear where someone would go after this. Where do you take them? Are they going to, um are they being arrested and then taken to jail? Do they actually stay in jail? Like, I just need to know more about that before we go on.
So uh those that we arrest, yes, go to jail. The challenge that we really have is we need more help from the community or from the county. Uh in public health, we need more off-ramps. We need folks to be able to go to more addiction. Those that are addicted need to have opportunities to go to addiction recovery. Uh and we need more off-ramps there. And we're working with the county and trying to identify some of those outreach workers that we can work with. To get some of those folks off the street.
Uh thank you. And I'll end with this, and it was when I was in the homeless space actively, I would say things that made people uncomfortable, and which is, we have people who are unhousable right now. And there needs to be an on-ramp so they can become houseable. I, I feel the same way for sure about, we have people who are untreatable right now. And we're not, as leaders, providing a space for them to go, which is a much, much more complex. Um sobering station and withdrawal center than we are accustomed to talking about in Flight Portland. So I really hope that we can continue to get data and that we can build a case for how we need resources for something that. Everyone in the community knows we need. Thanks so much.
And I just want to add, uh Commander Dobson was gracious, but in regards to the county and the outreach. Um we really need to hold them accountable. We are trying to identify outreach workers that actually join us in our efforts. And of course, there's resistance from some groups, because they don't even uh want to be seen or partner with the police. These are agencies that are getting funding. Um you know, from the county and from the state to do this outreach work. And even if they don't want to be seen, associated with the police. We've asked for resources to be dispersed in the same areas we're working, maybe in the hours that we're working. Um and we're running into hesitancy there. There's a unwillingness for, you know, these uh publicly funded. Outreach workers to step into this space with us, even if they do it from a distance. Uh so we can provide, you know, safety if there's a problem. So it's uh, that would be a great conversation to have at our level, is to understand why people that are getting public funding to do outreach work. Aren't willing to come downtown and do it in conjunction with our efforts, because we're not going to arrest our way out of this. It's not the mindset that I have and that we have, but we gotta have good partners. And right now, we're struggling with that. So let's put that in your, in your ear, commissioners.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, I just wanted to build off of one part of that, that, that last conversation. I, you know, the, there's the user component of this and there's the dealer component. Um and I actually thought the answers might go in a different direction. I, I do want to emphasize, we've had some changes in state law. We've had some changing. Uh in direction from the presiding judge at the circuit court, in part influenced by um state law. That is a major problem with respect to dealers uh in downtown and the catch-and-release issues that we're facing. Um i- in our community uh are a barrier. Um we cannot solve that entirely as a city of Portland. So I just wanted to put that be in the bonnet. I realized that we were talking as much about users, but, but on, on this particular topic, the rinse and repeat on dealers. Uh we badly need help um from our court system and the state legislature to really rethink. Um pre-trial release and some of the changes that have been made there. So I just want to put that be in the bonnet for, for everyone. It was a topic of conversation a little bit in Lipstick yesterday.
For that, I think we are uh gonna move forward uh in, and should focus now to. An overview from our retail theft missions uh with Commander Rob Simon and Sergeant Jorge uh uh Mendoza. Geez.
Thanks, Stephanie. Is that share screen working?
It's good.
Uh thanks for that. I'm Rob Simon from North Precinct. With me is the Neighborhood Response Team Sergeant Jorge Mendoza with me. Uh we're talking about retail theft specifically in North Precinct. Uh since kind of our timeline on when we started these missions, we've done about twenty missions since March of this year. We had a little bit of a lull during the double time for patrol, because it was more of a staffing. They were hiring officers more for double time than they were working for these missions for us. Uh our nerd team has done several smaller missions, uh that were more of a one-on-one basis with individual retailers. Uh sometimes those are smaller stores or they're one-offs. Uh during the time we've done these missions, we made well over a hundred and eighty arrests. Uh those charges range from theft, identity theft, E U M V firearms. Uh the whole spectrum on warrants and wanted persons, uh including person crimes, shooting suspects, burglars, et cetera. Uh we found that most of our suspects are involved in stealing, not just from the business that they're at, but from the entire uh county metro area. And uh the primary motivator for the majority of our suspects, uh drugs and money. It's not much of a surprise there. Uh one thing we have found is that we're, our focus is not, hasn't been on. You know, the person stealing the sandwich from Fred Myers. We're more focused on people dealing the giant conglomerate of stuff. Or the, the big ticket items running at a Dick's Sporting Goods or Home Depot. Those kind of things have been our focus. Some of the tactics that uh our team's using uh is that our nerd uh members or our sergeant will reach out to various managers ahead of time. Kind of let them know we'll be working a mission in the area on that day. Uh this helps the store manager, the LP manager staff up and kind of set expectations for their staff. Uh the pre-mission meeting also gives a face-to-face or kind of a personal touch for our officers to be talking to. Uh store staff and store management. Uh Sergeant Mendoza or the lead sergeant, who's ever working that day, will typically, typically put out eight to ten officers. Uh two experienced spotters who are in plain clothes at call-out stops. And they initially work the phones, the LP staff, because a lot of these loss prevention staff know the regulars, the frequent flyers to the locations. They're like, hey, John Smith just came in. He's gonna hit this, this and this, and he'll be out in ten minutes with the whole armload of stuff. So then we will work with LP and kind of direct our resources in that direction uh to focus there. Officers also recognize other criminal activity in these missions. Uh a lot of times we'll have a, a stolen car will show up to steal from Fred Myers or Ross. Uh and then we work on a plan to try to tactically intervene as they're walking out the store to go back to that stolen vehicle. Uh to try to prevent a traffic pursuit, which are inherently dangerous in the city. So we want to try to prevent those. So we work on tactically trying to keep the cars demobilized. We'll put spike trips behind them. Uh we'll have, we've had UC officers walk up and put spikes behind cars before they take off, which has been helpful. Demobilize, we'll put spike trips behind them. Uh, we'll have, we've had UC officers walk up and put spikes behind cars before they take off, which has been helpful. Uh, typically our NRT team members will try to work with smaller, smaller stores who have less of a robust uh, LP team. Uh, but they're willing to prosecute. So we don't just focus on the major chains, uh, but we do try to focus on some of the smaller stores. Uh, we also have had, and this is, this bit of a surprise to me when we started these missions, we do have some of the larger store chains who do not want to participate. Uh, and we're talking national level retailers that just are accepting of the losses that they're experiencing. So our results from these missions, um, we do get a conglomeration of things. Uh, the people that were arrested generally. Uh, the middle picture there, talking about uh, clothing items, the walking into onloads of stuff. But they're also involved in fentanyl and firearms-related offenses and stolen vehicles. Uh, one thing too, we do get, and this is, this picture on the left there is from a Fred Myers location where they were stealing all the laundry detergent. And that's essentially to sell it to a smaller retail store or they'll sell an offer up or their online resources uh, for selling it. And a couple of other pictures there, kind of self-explanatory stuff, there's recovered items from um, that's probably a Dick's Sporting Goods right there. And then some of the ID thefts too, over in the right-hand picture there. Firearms, this is, this is a bit of a surprise to some of us and how many firearms are being involved in these things. Uh, Sergeant Mendoza can speak specifically on what we're seeing with the guns, uh, since he's mostly on the, in the street, uh, doing that stuff. Uh, firsthand, and I'll defer to him here in a minute. Uh, on that part, but in talking about kind of the business appreciation, one of the biggest things about this is the interaction with officers in the businesses. They are super appreciative of us being there. They always want to take pictures with us. They always want to have us there. Um, a lot of the big stores are super friendly to targets to Fred Myers. Uh, this Home Depot in Jansen Beach, talking to the, the loss prevention regional manager uh, for the area. That Jansen Beach, or that Jansen Beach Home Depot between March of, March twenty-two to March of twenty-three. Lost over five million dollars in product walking out of the store. And thinking about it, obviously Portland, the business base pays a lot of our salaries, a lot of our retirements, a lot of our funding comes from these businesses. And when they struggle to move out of town, it puts a, a black eye on the city of Portland nationally and also as well as creating. You know, grocery desert or food deserts in certain parts of the community. And I mentioned this already, but this real quick, uh, talking about the stores that we focus on, we don't always focus on the big major chains. It's not always Target, Fred Myers, Home Depot, those stores. We do focus on some of the smaller retail locations too. Uh, this is just an example of Gulf Galaxy and Sierra Trading Post. Uh, that we've worked with in Jansen Beach and Cascade Station. So real quick on costs, I mean, these efforts cost a lot of money. Uh, North Precinct is really short-staffed currently. Uh, we kind of use a combination of our NRT team. Uh, we do short some districts at times to staff these missions and we use overtime. And overtime is at a premium. Our overtime funds kind of ebb and flow based on how things come from the city and how we spend our money. And then sometimes we'll be out of money to pay for these missions and it'll be a significant impact for the businesses. We do try to hire officers from other precincts at times uh, to work with us. And it has become commonplace now for uh, officers outside of North Precinct to volunteer to work these missions with us. Sergeant Mendoza, we'll talk about a couple of quick case studies on two or two cases that we had. So I'll defer to him on these.
Uh, good morning. I'm Sergeant Mendoza with the Neighborhood Response Team. Um, so Miss Jonathan here, full stand. Uh, while we were running one of our missions, uh, in front of Dick's Sporting Goods, uh, one of our detectives that was working in undercover uh, UC vehicle. Uh, he spotted Jonathan, he parked a stolen car in front of the Dick's Sporting Goods. Uh, he walked in and just started, uh, you know, stealing and concealing hundreds of dollars worth of items. Uh, as he exited, we took him into custody. It was pretty uneventful. The good thing about some of these cases is that um, we start identifying some of these chronic offenders in different areas and they're involved in different crimes. Central Precinct, we luckily had a Central Precinct officer working that day. That works for the entertainment detail and identified him as a suspect of, that had eluded police and the vehicle that was stolen. Uh, at the time at Central Precinct, he didn't have the license plates on there, so they only had probable cause arrest for elude and reckless driving. And there was also a picture of Jonathan at a gas station with that same vehicle. Um, upon further investigation, uh, he had pending charges for identity theft, theft one. Uh, domestic violence assault and restraint order violations. He was also in possession of a restricted weapon. Uh, and this is just kind of a example of some of the folks that go in there that are just um. Not only stealing, but they're involved in several other different crimes. Um, th- this Dick's Sporting Goods actually called us about these two females on top, Jones and Wade Smith. Um, they were stealing uh, a lot of items from the Dick's Sporting Goods, attempted to pay for some, I believe it was a thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars worth of merchandise. Um, the check that they produced to Dick's Sporting Goods was forged. And they also had other items, uh, like mail, mail theft and a lot of other items they used for forgery. Uh, they walked out of the, I, they walked out of the store with all items after they were denied the check purchase. Uh, they were arrested with no incident. Wade Smith made um, a comment that she was being trafficked. Uh, so we involved the human trafficking unit, uh, and that she was being trafficked by Mr. McCollum Henry. And also made a statement that she had been shot at by Mr. McCollum. Um, after they were arrested and some follow-up investigation had occurred. Uh, officers of the Neighborhood Response Team responded to Dick's Sporting Goods to do follow-up on this case to get video and things like that. They happened to run into McCollum, who was around a Honda Odyssey and was looking around. Uh, they already had his information, so they knew he was wanted for an outstanding parole warrant. Um, McCollum sees the officers, he goes into Dick's Sporting Goods and disposes of a firearm. Officers go inside the, the Dick's Sporting Goods, arrest them and also seize the firearm that was placed in a, in a, in a small backpack. Um, after more investigation and processing the firearm, it came back to four uh, shootings in the area. Three in the area of Portland and one in Salem. Uh, just another, another case that uh, some of these folks are involved in different crimes.
That's what we have for our slideshow. We had to pick up the pace a little bit, try to get back on track. So if there's any questions, we can help address those.
Commissioner Maps.
Uh, thank you. I'll try to be quick. Uh, first, thanks for the report and thanks for this important work. I think you mentioned that you ran, I think twenty missions between March and roughly the present day. That's about two missions a month. Uh, how many missions do you, I feel like we have, we're ramping up, let's put it that way. Um, so. Do you have any advice to counsel on the number of retail theft missions that we should, we should be running a year?
Well, Commissioner, that um, that's a good question. Uh, those twenty missions are just in North Precinct. Now, North Precinct, yeah, it's just northeast also does their missions. They're doing about one a month right now. And they're focused on Port Plaza Mall two oh five area. But we in North Precinct have some major shopping areas, Cascade Station, Jansen Beach, Lloyd Center and the Hollywood area. So we have big hubs of retail that happen and we're very transitory. So people come in their cars and they drive away. Versus a downtown retail theft mission looks a little different with Pioneer Place. Uh, and with some of the businesses up in Northwest on twenty-third and twenty-first. So to answer your question, I don't have an exact answer. But we could do these missions in Dick's Sporting Goods, parking lot almost every day and we would find fruitful results. Uh, it's just, we have to try to change the opinions and the direction and focus. Uh, of the criminal element to understand that we're back out there and we're engaged again. And that's what we're trying, and that's kind of the focus of doing this.
Great. Uh, thank you for that clarification and um, here to make things uh, efficient, I'll put a plea into the, to the mayor's office. Um, clearly retail theft is a huge issue in the Portland area. We hear from that, from business owners all the time. Um, I don't have a, a clear sense of, I get the sense that we're not doing enough in terms of running retail theft missions. But I'm sure every precinct is different. I'd love to get a sense of, of what a comprehensive strategy in the space looks like. Um, I know I, I certainly don't go weak when I don't hear about some business that is verging on going out of business because they can't um. Sustain both the, the loss of, of product and frankly, the physical violence that comes along with that. So uh, Mr. Mayor Stephanie, I hope this is a conversation we can have. And as long as we're talking about conversations, I hope that we can have a particular version of this problem that I hear about all the time and pains me deeply is um. Uh, retail theft at grocery stores. Um, it's a low-margin business. Frankly, also those situations often tend to, to, I think, frankly, devolve into violence because you have a. Especially for the independent change, you have a small independent operator. He knows frankly, the cops may not show up. Uh, if they do show up, there's going to be no prosecution and it is, you know, that bucket of soap or whatnot. Uh, uh, is the kind of the difference between staying open or not, violence happens. I don't know how to fix this. Uh, but I, I hear about this problem enough, uh, that I feel like we really should be doing more as a city.
Yeah, just brief, just briefly, cause I, I know time is of the essence here. We actually do work with grocery stores uh, through my office. We reach out to businesses large and small. We actually had a, uh, probably our most comprehensive effort has been with Fred Meyer. And um, I think there's even been an article or two about it and they're very satisfied with the work my administration is doing around retail theft. Not only the, the operations that they're talking about today, but we also work with them on security measures, infrastructural improvements, lighting improvements, activation. And uh, for a later date, there may even be in addition to our legislative agenda, we want to take a look at that, that grocery stores in particular are, are saying. Uh, creates some uh, some headwinds from them from a public safety perspective. But you're, you're spot on Commissioner Maps that, that retail theft from grocery stores is a concern that we're addressing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, just very quickly, I'm glad to hear your office is doing that outreach and if I could do, uh, uh, a plea for a particular constituents. Uh, uh, um, there is, I'm sure uh, the folks on this call are probably, are maybe familiar with the grocery outlet in the Parkers neighborhood. It's on Sandy Boulevard. I've known those folks for years, helped get that store set up. And I'll tell you, they are just holding on uh, um, by a thread. There's been terrible acts of violence to the uh, um. Uh, uh, folks who work there and the folks who own that business. Um, and frankly, I've seen that neighborhood with a grocery store and without a grocery store. They're better off with a grocery store. But it's a real tough haul. Um, and I think they're gonna need help from City Hall in order to, to keep going. So.
And I'll just, yeah, I'll just say also, I, I have personally spoken with those folks and their national, um, you know, support teams. I know Rob Simon and uh, Lieutenant Sensgard are in regular contact, so we are very, very much uh, you know, in contact with them, working to, to support them and figure out what we can do. Chief Day.
I'll, I'll save my remarks to the end. I've, I've got a lot of thoughts about this. Just know it's a priority and we're looking at this holistically. I have a meeting in a couple of weeks with the Retailer Industry Leaders Association of America. You know, Governor Newsom just put two hundred and fifty million dollars aside to District Attorney's Office and Law Enforcement in California for this issue. So I think this is, you know, gaining attention, awareness.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say thank you to Commander Simon and Sergeant Mendoza. That was a great report. It was uh, pretty close to home. Those are all the places that I go in North Portland, living there most of my life and. You, you know, I've seen it with my own eyes, so um, that were, there's that. But I, I appreciate that you mentioned that this had a little bit more of a focus on the bigger box, but you also are focusing on the smaller retail. I did a recent uh, walking tour with small businesses in St. John's and it was very grim and sad to hear their stories. And um, one thing I wanted to ask you about is we passed on resources, Commissioner Rubio might have more on this, but it's with Prosper Portland. Um, the small businesses, uh, stabilization and restoration grants has oftentimes with the small businesses, as you know, there's vandalism also connected with these activities. And they say that it's pretty slow-go sometimes, but I'm wondering if we connect the dots so the police reports. Could help uh, get those monies from Prosper, from those small businesses. Has there been dialogue with that, connecting the dots between the two? And if not, my job is to just bring up things that um, I'm listening to and noticing to, to connect the dots and hopefully we can build a better system of reporting. Cause I think we're putting too much on the small businesses to fill out the forms and then it goes into what they say. It just takes a long time for them to hear anything or to get any relief and we're losing small businesses, as you know, daily, as you can see with all the empty storefronts.
And Commissioner Ryan, uh, there are some real blocks with that. Uh, I've just been involved in the periphery conversations with those. A lot of times they're smaller retail stores. The issue we come up with is a lack of reporting. They don't want to take the time to make the reports. So a lot of times we don't get the data that focuses on what's happening at their stores. We hear about it anecdotally, but then we find that there's no reports in our system that they actually were the victims of a crime. We've been trying to do that education piece. I know Sergeant Mendoza has been with his team, is by making sure that these smaller stores understand the necessity to make the police reports. Cause that's how we track our data and that's how we assign our resources in the precinct.
I think, I think that's true and I think we need, as we meet them where they are, there's reasons for that. And we need to get to why, because they want support, they want relief, but they don't trust that anything's gonna happen. And they probably have fear on retaliation. So it's, it's complex and we all know that. So I just hope that we could continue to figure that out. Thanks.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Um, I, this, this is mostly for you Stephanie. I'd like to understand the legislative ask. I'm, I'm familiar with some of the liability issues uh, that many retailers are concerned about and being active with respect to. Um, thefts in particular, big box and kind of, so anyways, offline, I'd be curious what the, what, what the planned legislative ask is there. Um, and second, I mean, this might be as much a question for the mayor. As we hear about the various good works of uh, Portland Police on this call today, there's a number of areas that we're getting traction, um, some success. Um, and, but we also have finite resources and just trying to uh. You know, how do we sort of develop a, a, a game plan for public safety that makes the most impact over the next thirteen months? Um, and then maybe it's a little bit of open-ended question that we can say for later, but just what help do you need from us and sort of. Uh, gauging those priorities, what, what, as the police commissioner, um, you know, is in your domain to sort of articulate those priorities. And I, I'm saying that open-ended, that's just, I'm hearing a lot of good stuff. They all cost money. They all take police force to, to execute on and. Uh, making our choices on, on the biggest bang for the buck.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have an extensive discussion about this during the budget process, but we, we look for leverage. We look for partnerships and a lot of the successes that were mentioned today, whether it was the substantial decrease in stolen vehicles, whether it's the work we're doing around. Human trafficking, whether it's the work that we're doing around organized retail theft. Uh, what, what they all have in common is partnerships with others. Uh, sometimes it's other government jurisdictions, the district attorney. Other law enforcement agencies, sometimes it's private sector players. Um, yeah, so I, I look for leverage. Uh, I look for outcomes. I look for, uh, we're collecting really good data and I have reams of data here on where we're successful and frankly, areas where we're still struggling. And then there's the retail court and the res- the uh, hotel and hospitality district. That is a priority. And we've moved a lot of visible street patrols into that area. Um, not only to combat real crime, but also to uh, to have a visible presence. Because perception becomes reality and a lot of people are concerned that they, they quote, don't feel safe. A, a lot of the numbers are going our way now. There's a lot of very positive trends. There's reductions in criminal activity. I want to continue that and that's based on data, but we also need uh, the police to be visible. And then last but not least, there is the work that we have to collectively do across the spectrum. Um, you know, we, we know that, that we need to improve our call time response rate. And that has both to do with personnel in the police bureau as well as personnel in Boick. So we're, we're going to be looking at all of those things in terms of where the gaps are, where we need to fill in, where we're making good headroad, uh, headway that we want to continue. Uh, and also just make sure that we improve the, the visibility and performance of the police bureau. But that, that will, I guarantee you, we're, we're probably going to spend the lion's share of our time in the budget process on this very subject. That's my guess.
And, and Mayor, you got at the last point, I kind of wanted to hit on that, just the importance of how we get multiplying effects. Because police don't operate in a vacuum, right? And circles back to some of the social services questions Commissioner Ryan had, as well as some of the other city programs. some of the social services questions Commissioner Ryan had, as well as some of the other city programs that sort of m- multiply what police does, but then there's the courts, uh, the DA um, and our other public partners that are what resources they're willing to put out a problem are, are obviously not irrelevant in this conversation. So um, look forward to the broader conversation. Thanks.
Yeah, me, me too. Thanks for the question. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to go circle back to uh, my colleague, Commissioner Ryan and, and that conversation with uh, Commander Simon. Um, our office has been working um, uh, to put on these uh, victim rights panels and, and trainings uh, for businesses who are experiencing uh, a high level of crime, uh, particularly retail theft. And uh, we, we started in the Central East Side. They were really incredibly successful um, workshops. And so we're starting to move around the city with them. We've had two so far. Um, I believe we are working um, with P P B, also the business districts and the DA's office. And I know Stephanie, you're, you're very connected and involved with that too. So I just want, um, and central to that is first ensuring that um, we need to encourage reporting regardless of, you know, uh, whether it's worth it or not, to, to your point, uh, Commander Simon. So um, we'll make sure to make that a little bit, um, we'll, we'll, we'll share that with uh, with council so that you're all aware of uh, when it's happening so that you can ensure uh, or you can share that with constituents as well. Um, and um, yeah, we can follow up um, offline. Just wanted to make sure that we got that in there.
Yeah, uh, real quick, I just want to thank Commissioner Rubio for what I just heard. And also let's remember that a lot of our small businesses are not filling out reports because insurance stopped um, providing any resources to them. So that's like how grim this issue is right now. Um, we have so many insurance companies that basically have redlined Portland in terms of getting uh, relief when they have damages. So this um, chronic issue has gotten to this place over time. Thanks.
You, um, I'm going to move us through. We're going to keep plugging ahead. Uh, and I think I'm going to hand it over to Lieutenant Burley to give us a quick overview on the behavioral health unit, uh, and uh, jump right in.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Howard. Uh, Commissioners, thank you for uh, having me uh, today and uh, Chief, thanks for the uh, invitation. Uh, is the uh, presentation up there? All right. I'm Lieutenant Chris Burley, uh, and I work in our behavioral health unit along with five behavioral health response team officers, five behavioral health response team licensed clinicians, one crisis intervention training coordinator, coordinating officer, uh, service coordinate, service coordination team officer, an analyst, admin, admin support specialist, uh, S C T and which is our service coordination team and mental health crisis responder to manager. And then we also currently have in the police bureau, 166 enhanced crisis intervention trained uh, certified officers. Those detached means that they are assigned to, uh, in this case, uh, primarily uh, precincts. Um, and uh, I'll explain what they do and how they fit into the police bureau's um, model for um, responding to persons in crisis. Uh, so the mission of the behavioral health unit, which was uh, in its created in its current form in 2013, uh, is really to provide as a navigation piece when uh, folks are coming in contact with the criminal justice system, um, and uh, officers are responding and uh, coming in contact with them, uh, and whether that crisis is a result of mental illness and or uh, drug and alcohol addiction. The, there's multiple layers to the police bureau's response uh, as it relates to um, uh, persons in mental health or addiction uh, crisis. Um, in our first piece here, not surprisingly, uh, and as the mayor uh, talked about just briefly is the Bureau of Emergency Communication. Uh, so uh, when somebody sees someone that is in need of help or um, has an issue uh, at their residence or wherever they are in the, the Portland area, they call uh, 911. And uh, 911 is our triage system for deciding who is going to respond. Is it going to be the Portland Police Bureau that's going to respond? Uh, is it going to be potentially be able to hand it off to our partners at the Multnomah County uh, Crisis uh, Call Center? Um, or are they going to be able to dispatch some of our uh, community partners such as Portland Street Response or Project Respond? In the city of Portland, uh, our officers uh, receive uh, more crisis training than a lot of our other jurisdictions throughout the nation. Every Portland police officer receives a minimum of 40 hours of mental health response training. They receive some of that at the basic academy and then they receive uh, whatever uh, is left over to receive at our advanced academy. But I, you know, I think that it's super important and it shows uh, that the police bureau is well invested um, in recognizing that police are being tasked with because of the limited resources that are out there of responding to people that are in mental health crisis. And it's important that our officers have uh, the skills, knowledge and tools to be able to uh, as safely as possible, uh, make contact with and uh, deescalate situations uh, involving persons in crisis. Um, our next component uh, for responding to 911 calls for service or calls for service in the community is our enhanced crisis intervention team. These are also sworn members in the police bureau, the majority of which um, are assigned to our patrol division. And again, currently the police bureau has 166 certified uh, enhanced crisis intervention team officers. Uh, in addition to that 40 hours of uh, mental health response training that all of the Portland Police Bureau officers get, they get an additional 40 hours of training um, upfront to become certified and then on a general, uh, as a general rule, receive an additional 10 hours of training per year. Um, and uh, as part of this more robust training, they're uh, getting, given an opportunity to hear from community panels, from uh, community partners, um, learn uh, new techniques and um, other uh, areas, fields of knowledge on how to deescalate situations uh, and what other resources are available uh, in the community uh, as it relates to persons in crisis. The uh, one of the components of the um, enhanced crisis intervention uh, team certified members is that they must uh, volunteer. If they had to apply, uh, they're vetted and then uh, they uh, may attend uh, the 40 hour E C I T course and then upon successful completion uh, become certified. So this right here, this uh, portion is, covers for example, if somebody calls into 911 or if somebody were to call in a non emergency and Boick were to use their uh, dispatching criteria to determine that police needed to respond. Um, there's criteria for when dispatch or Boick will uh, dispatch an E C I T officer rather than just a patrol officer. And I'd be happy to share that with you all, but in the uh, interest in time, I'll um, leave that out for right now. Uh, our next uh, portion here looks at post-call. Um, what uh, resources do the, does the police bureau have uh, as it relates to uh, a person in the community that's got, has is in crisis and has been in contact with the criminal justice uh, system or law enforcement. Um, and that falls on our behavioral health response teams uh, here at the behavioral health unit. Currently, as I uh, stated when I first started off, that uh, we have uh, five behavioral health response teams. They're comprised of an officer and a clinician. Um, really appreciative of the Commissioners uh, and Mayor supporting our move to having five uh, city-employed licensed clinicians as part of our team now. Um, it's uh, a wonderful asset. These uh, teams uh, receive referrals from other Portland Police Bureau members in our uh, behavioral health unit electronic referral system. It's a, a system where officers fill out information, uh, giving officers knowledge of a call that they went to that involved someone in mental health crisis. Our sergeants uh, here at the unit, they review their referrals and then uh, if the, the referral meets criteria, assigns the person uh, to a team. The mental health uh, professional and officer go out, contact, locate the person and uh, through building rapport and trust with the person, giving them voice, uh, learning where they're at and what might be best to suit their needs determines uh, what path uh, forward to go uh, with them. Um, in some cases, uh, that's reconnecting them with services. Uh, in other cases, it's identifying that they pose a danger to the community um, or to themselves and they're needed, in need of um, you know, immediate care uh, per the Oregon revised statute um, and placing that person um, on a uh, a, a police officer's hold. Uh, but there's a lot of other pieces that our behavioral health uh, unit uh, response teams do as well. Today, I had a, a team uh, that, that was going out with our administrative support specialist who is a notary of the public because this person has been without the ability to get her social security disability, uh, because she doesn't have an identification. Um, and in order to get that uh, through uh, Social Security Administration, she needs to have identification. She's not in a uh, a state of mind right now where she could be taken to a D M B. There's uh, other groups that we've reached out to to try and help with this have been unsuccessful. And so our teams are going out today along with Central Precinct to uh, get this person um, one step closer to uh, getting her ID and uh, the $10,000 in back pay uh, that she has waiting for her to ensure that she continues to have housing um, and her other basic needs are, are met. So just as an example of what we're, what we're doing today uh, to help uh, members in our community uh, that are on the verge of homelessness, um, or are expect, uh, experiencing homelessness. Another component of the behavioral health, or behavioral health unit is our service coordination team. I think is a lot of folks on this call today have kind of talked about uh, the, the drug issues that are facing Portland right now are overwhelming. The service coordination team uh, has been around uh, before the behavioral health unit and uh, takes a look at assisting folks that are having repeat contacts with the criminal justice system because of addiction, um, and providing them supportive housing to break that cycle. Uh, and again, the complications with our current uh, drug up uh, epidemic, especially with fentanyl. Um, I've heard from our service coordination, or yeah, our service coordination team officer of going out and contacting people um, that are living in the community addicted to fentanyl um, and uh, asking the, the officer um, as the person's laying there uh, with a needle in their arm, uh, telling the officer, look what you all did to me by taking, by uh, legalizing this. Um, folks um, speak, talk of, that are, that are suffering from addiction are talking that they do not, no longer have an opportunity to be uh, taken away from the drugs by potentially going to jail for a period of time, go, go into a sobering facility. Um, it just doesn't exist in Portland right now. And um, to have somebody that is so addicted that they've got a syringe in their arm, an law enforcement officer there and telling the officer that, I think that speaks volumes about how as a community, we've um, failed a, a lot of our, our folks um, that are suffering with addiction, um, and is feeding a lot of the stuff that we're, we're talking about today. Um, I, I think that uh, that you all should have received a um, kind of some of the stats um, on the behavioral health unit. That uh, did Stephanie, did you get the?
I, I got it. I'll forward it to them now and I'm going to give you a one minute time check, Lieutenant.
Okay, uh, sounds good. Uh, so yep, that stat sheet uh, is there for you. Um, I'll point out that uh, people that uh, have been contacted by the health, behavioral health response teams have had, seen, we've seen a 40% reduction in their law enforcement contacts uh, one year in comparison to one year prior to the V H R T contact to post. And then uh, the service coordination team, um, graduates of the program have seen an 82% reduction in arrests post completion. And then one last piece of the behavioral health unit that I haven't mentioned yet is our threat advisory program, which looks at uh, prevention of targeted threats in the community. Um, the, the V H U and their target of threats uh, program has been involved in a multitude of different uh, targeted threats. One of the most recent of uh, which incidents was uh, the, as you might remember in late October, there was a gentleman that was arrested by a Portland man that was arrested by Du- Deschutes County. Um, that was uh, reportedly going to uh, Smith Rock to a climbing event there and uh, threatening violence. I bring that up because I think that the behavioral health unit and our threat advisory program can uh, provide some guidance for the city as we look at prevention of workplace violence. We would like to work with uh, whatever uh, whether it be B H R to identify uh, really non-law enforcement centered training to ensure that uh, as a city, we're doing uh, what we can to make our city employees uh, coming to a, a safe work environment. And so our managers and supervisors know what to do if they come um, into contact with an employee that has concerns about potential workplace violence. Thank you.
Commissioner Maps?
Uh, we're short on time, so I'll try to be very brief. First, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for this uh, very important work. I'll state the obvious, which is I think council needs more time to learn more about this important policy area. And I have a direct request to the mayor's office, uh, which is related to the presentation that we heard today. I believe the mayor's office is working with the county to develop uh, a new version of a contract with the joint office. Uh, um, and one of the things I hope to learn, uh, I hope to both learn and see in the next contract is some explicit language that explains how that contract will support the important work. Work that uh, the behavioral, the county is a good partner uh, to support the work that they're doing. And I hope that we can kind of define that in the actual operating agreement we have with our mental health partners. And I'll turn the floor back over to my colleague.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, I think we are heading into our last presentation before we give the chief a few minutes to close us out. And so I'll hand it over to uh, Brian for our staffing and hiring update.
Thank you, Stephanie, and Commissioners, thank you for joining us today. I'm Brian Hughes, captain of the Personnel Division here at the Portland Police Bureau. I have a slideshow to share. Hopefully it plays from the beginning. Stephanie, can you see the slideshow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's the actual slideshow and not my presenter, pre-interview.
Um. Looking at your presenter view, Brian.
Oh, is it?
Which is fine. If you just want to move us along, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe I'll do that in the interest of time. All right. Uh, current data, we uh, have 124 vacancies in the bureau. And those vacancies consist of 46 professional staff and 78 sworn staff. Our current authorized strength for sworn is 882. I get asked those numbers all the time, so I figured I would start with those numbers. Uh, hiring data, so it looks like uh, for our hiring over the last few years, we did hire in 2020. Even though that's when we kind of uh, turned things down and we turned things down uh, for the fact that we didn't want to have to lay off staff. So we um, slowed down our hiring and uh, temporarily let go some of our background investigators and then we put them back uh, at the end of 2021 and ramped up hiring again. So that 2021 gap you see where we've only hired 27, that's why. Uh, because of uh, the, the things that happened during 2020. We weren't sure about what our sworn staff would look like number wise. So to be careful, that's what happened. So uh, for the last uh, three years, a total of 219 sworn hires. At the same time, we lost people. So 140 uh, members retired during that timeframe and 157 resigned prior to uh, their uh, retirement date. So it's a constant battle between retirements and hiring here at the bureau, um, which brings me to retirements. Uh, I'm not sure if everyone on the call is aware, but we do have uh, bi-weekly pay structure here in the police bureau that results in favorable retirement because it conditions when a 27 pay period happens in a 365 day period. When that happens here at the bureau, we see more retirements. And I've pulled the numbers so you can see what it looked like for the twenty-seven pay period date listed. So in August first, two thousand and twenty, fifty-two people took advantage of that. And then these are the other dates when that's happened. So the next one is coming up here Friday. And we'll have seventeen people that have indicated they are ready to retire on that date. And we'll probably see right around that. There's, we have, we don't, people don't have to tell us when they're going to retire. Many do. But it's it's through over a period of time that they tell us. So I think that number is going to be accurate. We don't have any for June so far. And then this November first date is something I want to focus in on. Because you'll see a gap there from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six. So typically, members work beyond their retirement date. There's a variety of reasons for doing that. I'd like to think that many of them like working here in the city of Portland and doing their part to keep the city safe. But there's also some financial components to that and health insurance and staying employed. So currently, as of today, ninety-six sworn members could retire today, including me. But we stay on for a variety of reasons. And one of the people that's eligible today became eligible back in two thousand and ten. So they are still here. So not counting the members that already indicated they will retire in December, when we get to November of next year, one hundred and thirty members will be eligible to retire. So that's the ninety-six member right here, plus all the ones that will become eligible by November. And that key, that date right there is important because there won't be another twenty-seven favorable pay period for eighteen months. Meaning that there could be a larger number of retirements at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And I believe that there probably will be. Not all of them, not one hundred and thirty, but we'll we'll see more. So on that note, we recruitment must continue at or above current pace to account for those retirements and fill current vacancies. We have just got approval to begin the interview now cloud-based technology to increase applicant engagement. I don't know how many of you shot for Christmas or the holidays over the weekend, but a lot of those websites are collecting your email. And what we've seen is a lot of junk mail going into people's emails and a lot less responsiveness from our applicants via email. So this interview now technology is a text-based platform that keeps our applicants engaged from the very beginning when they first check in with the city all the way up to the date of hire and it sends them reminders and text. And just anecdotally, we've had background investigators that have had people not respond for up to a week to emails and experiencing a little frustration with that. So this interview, actually, let me back up. When they when they send a text to those candidates, they would typically receive a response within a minute. So we believe it's just due to just an overwhelming amount of email and difficulties in sorting through that. So this interview now, I think, will help us keep people engaged. It's not cheap. But we believe it's worth the investment. So we've also increased spending on strategic recruiting advertisements. If you've been in the Portland International Airport, we should have a join Portland Police ad cycling on any number of the kiosks that are there to include the ones in all three of the concourses plus the baggage claim area, inviting people to apply and directing them to our join Portland Police website. We've also placed that advertising in area, local area gyms and then social larger social media presence. And then on the N T N applicant website, the N T N stands for National Testing Network. We've spent some dollars to be at the front and center on that website so that when people take the N T N test and pass, they can see us right at the top and send their applications our way. We've also refreshed social media campaigns through podcasts, Instagram reels, YouTube, Facebook. Current campaign is Hood to Coast, highlighting the benefits of living in the Pacific Northwest. And then we also do monthly hiring workshops and those are held out at the training division. And a background investigator gives a PowerPoint presentation. We also invite participants to give a shot at the what's called the ORPAT, which is the Oregon Physical Abilities Test that all police in the state are required to pass. And it's a jog around, five laps around a little obstacle course and then a push-pull machine and we give applicants the opportunity to see what that's all about. So we do have some upcoming dates out of the training division. It's open to the public. So basically, anyone can come in, we'll explain the process to you, give you a chance to go through the obstacle course. Those are set for December ninth, January sixth and February tenth from nine AM to twelve at the training division. Again, open to the public. So if you know anybody that's interested in being a cop, send them our way. You can get more information on joinportlandpolice.com.
Right, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a one minute warning so we can make sure the chief's got the little time at the end. Thank you.
Roger. No pressure, Brian. No pressure. You're just cutting into my time. Go ahead.
But that was good marketing. I I approve of that. That was well positioned.
This is personnel time. All right, so real quick, P P D goes Hood to Coast. Get on the Portland Police YouTube webpage and check this out. This is an awesome homegrown pod or video short reel that shows all the benefits of of working here in the Portland area and living in the Pacific Northwest. These two young officers did an amazing job. Check it out. I won't play the video now because we're short on time. Finally, recruitment, we do have some hope. So our our website visits are up. You can see here July, August, September up into, you know, up around twenty thousand visits. That coincides with an increase in applications, which is this blue line here. We're up to around over one hundred and twenty applications a month. We're seeing great applicants. However, we still have a very high standard here in the Portland Police Bureau and conduct thorough background investigations on all the people that apply. Any questions?
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, great job putting this together. Thank you commissioners for your engagement and I want to thank you all for your support. You know, having the short period of time that I've been on board, I have certainly felt that, heard that. I've been conveying that internally and externally. It's much appreciated as we sense the urgency around public safety conversation. And there are many things to be proud of, certainly that I don't take credit for. I mean, overall reported crime is down eleven percent as of October first of this year compared to the same time of last year. Just a few numbers to throw out. I mean homicides down sixteen percent, overall person crimes, six percent. Overall property crime, twelve percent, you know, motor vehicle, twenty-three percent robbery down fourteen. So there's a lot of things that are trending in the right direction, as the mayor said, and all of you have been vocal about that and just know that it's a commitment of mine to partner with each of you to continue to promote that good work to the community as we work on. And you know, one of my primary goals of reducing crime and the fear of crimes through enforcement and community engagement. Hopefully you heard that theme throughout that I do not have an arrest-first policy, but I will talk candidly and directly about the need for enforcement. But this is really about our community coming together and I will tell you, I have been overwhelmed, almost overwhelmed with the amount of community and support from people across the spectrum of this city leaning in in a way that I haven't seen in my thirty-plus years of involvement with public safety. So I'm greatly encouraged by that. I don't assure you that as and I appreciate that final slide, the emphasis on recruitment and hiring is going to continue to be a mantra of mine. And you will see that throughout the conversations that we have going forward. But I also want to identify that I see that on a separate track. We have two parallel roads that are running side by side. We have to continue to be committed to hiring and recruitment. The city has a long history, particularly around public safety. And I understand the cost implications and the other issues of ramping up and slowing down, ramping up and slowing down. I'd love to see this council put the future council and the future administration on a track where we can make a sustainable commitment so we don't have the drop off and the big gaps in retirement. But second of all, at the same time, I see the Portland Police Bureau as one agency with, you know, eight hundred and so sworn positions from myself on down, including about two hundred and some odd civilian or professional staff. And I want you to know my commitment to maximizing all those resources. I do not see us operated from a position of scarcity. And I'm a hundred percent committed to innovative ideas and problem solvings to best use the resources we have. All the presentations you saw today are being done outside of the operational, excuse me, the operational field. In other words, we still have cops out trying to take calls for service. I'm looking at all of these programs that you saw today and elevating them and also seeing if there's a way to transfer their progress and success into patrol. So you're going to be hearing me bring forth some creative problem solving ideas in the two thousand and twenty-four. I look forward to working with the mayor and Stephanie on those, whether they be around policy enforcement, regionalizing our efforts with our partners, this retail theft mission we did over the weekend with Gresham, the port and Multnomah County, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want you to know that I I really am committed to using the resources we have throughout the organization, you know, to make an impact. And I'm greatly excited for the opportunity it lays before us. I think that, you know, although public safety is certainly priority one for us from from the state on down, I think we're on a track to change the narrative and have the impact that we all desire to see. At the same time, honoring and respecting our community members and working within the, you know, the confines that we have around resources, which is, you know, time, money and people. So once again, Mayor, just thank you so much for your support and confidence in me for the opportunity to step into this role. And Stephanie, for your liaison and 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 support. I much appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Chief. And Stephanie, thank you for your great work. Thanks to all of our presenters today. And colleagues, I hope this was a good session. It probably provoked a lot of questions and a lot of further discussion and I look forward to it as I know you do. And with that, believe it or not, we're adjourned three minutes early. Thanks, everybody.